It is 4:03. We want to start on time. We want to end on time. We want to respect everybody's time. And we know you have a time limit because you're supposed to be somewhere else at 7:00. So we're going to let you leave at 6:59, and good luck. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you call the roll?
Councilmember Bana.
Bana, did you get a cup? That may not be your seat. She's present.
Vice Mayor McLaughlin.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Willis will be absent for this entire meeting. Councilmembers Zapata and Mayor Martinez.
Did you get a cup? You want me to get one for you? Don't you go pick your own. You go pick your own. Okay. While they're finding their assigned seats, they haven't revolted yet. It's a process that I use and suggest so people don't always sit where they normally sit and kind of mix it up. One, two, three, there, four, five, six. All right, and Councilmember Willis is not present. Okay, all right. Now that we are in our assigned seats class, let's run through the timeline. Your agenda is broad, as you know. I tried to put it together in a way that will let us know how we need to be moving and where we think we want to be at various times. Okay, let me get the time frame up. Okay, so the first thing that we propose to do is to determine, as I always say, it's your meeting, whether or not you want to modify the order in which we're proposing to do this. While she's bringing that up, I will tell you what I did was propose that we pick up where we left off. We got through Goals 1 and 2. We did not get to 3, 4, 5, and 6. The hope today is that we get through 3, 4, 5, and 6. I think the time was well spent last time when we got consensus around the process and how we're going to view these. And I would ask you, as we go through this today, that we try not to reevaluate whether or not these are objectives we want to do. That you make your questions brief, and we make the responses brief. And the reason I suggest that, and again, I'll remind you, it's nobody's fault. But we are way behind. Because one of the main purposes was to have this discussion, this goal setting, and these objectives determinations inform the budget process. And you're going to be dealing with your budget in five days. So I'm really, you monitor me and let me know, Mr. Mayor and all of you, if I'm pushing too fast. But my hope is that we can get through 6 today and then see what we need to do to pull it all together. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I have suggestions that I'd like to make.
Sure, of course.
First of all, I want to express appreciation to staff for putting this together. In fact, they did such a good job that I would propose that we use this as a means of reviewing and voting. They have done an excellent job of putting things together into buckets. And I think what we should vote on is the objectives and not focus, I mean, the goals and not focus on the objectives. If we focus on the objectives, we're going to do what we did last time, which is to spend a lot of time discussing, debating. And I think the objectives are something that we should determine in City Council. So, you know, because some of them are straightforward, you know, you vote on them, that's it. Some of them have lots of objectives. And I think that the goal expresses the intent. And it is the intent of the city moving forward that we're focusing on. You know, how we do that is something that is up for debate, and it's something that will require hours and hours and hours of time. And those hours can be taken up in City Council as items are brought up. You know, for instance, if there's one objective and I say that it's a metro walk per se, you know, let's just say that there's metro walk. And I bring it up, and we discuss it, and the council votes against it, then I know that that's one of the ones that was not considered. But when we vote on the goals, we will have a general sense of the intent of the council. Now, when we go to voting, I think that, like I said, we should use Attachment 3. And then when we vote on the overarching goal areas, if there are less than 10 goals, then we should have three votes, each of us. And then we will count the votes, and then the top three objectives will be, or the top three goals will be the ones that we'll run with. If it has 10 or more, then we will have seven votes. And then we will tally them up to see which ones get the majority.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, so I agree. I think that this new spreadsheet is so good.
The what?
It's very good. It's exciting, and I'm excited that the staff did all of this work on it. And I like what's proposed in terms of the voting that we get. If there's less than 10 goals under a overarching goal, that we have three votes. I also want to bring forward and give Councilmember Zapata an opportunity to talk about his adjustments. And I wonder if this, if, once people hear about the adjustments to the spreadsheet, if this is something that can be done by staff afterwards? Because I don't think that we'll have time to do it now, but I think that they're really important. So I don't know if we can bring forward the suggested adjustments to the spreadsheet.
Again, I'll keep reminding you, this is your meeting. My job is to just try to facilitate it and recognize, and the mayor's supposed to help me, recognize people in order in which they raise their hands. So I think it's, yes, it is Vice Mayor.
Yes. I don't see anything that's yet put together for Goal Number 6, the shoreline.
Mine doesn't have it.
Is there another page?
It says, "Strengthen the internal infrastructure and processes," Goal 5.
The packet doesn't have it, I think, but this would be, may I?
Councilmember Zapata.
So what I did last minute, and thank you, staff, this is a really great spreadsheet, what I did last minute, which is being passed out now, hopefully will help us because this further gives us a goal number. So, for example, the green sheet, and they're all color-coded, so the green sheet is Goal 1, but then within that you'll have like 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, so we can reference each one individually and hopefully get us to consensus on that quicker. But then one of the pages she's passing out will be Goal Number 6, and that is the shoreline. Staff in the blue packet might not have it. I have a look.
I don't see it yet. Maybe.
But I know that what's printed does have the six goals.
Well, let's hold just a second so that Vice Mayor McLaughlin is...
I just, to me, that's a very, very important goal, and I do not see it. And I'm hoping that it's not in any of the paperwork.
Okay, well, let's slow it down just a second. Vice Mayor McLaughlin was the champion of that issue, and I want to make sure she has what she needs so she can participate adequately. Does somebody have an extra copy?
It is not in any of the paperwork that I have.
But it's in the attachment that are in the...
But I don't have that available right now.
We'll get it. We'll get it. Let's just hold for a second.
It got printed, so.
Okay.
We have everything else on paper, so I think we should have that on paper as well.
Yes, yes. Point is well made. Okay, is somebody getting Vice Mayor McLaughlin? That, yes, is coming. So we're coming back to it. You championed that issue. You called me.
I just don't want it to be left out.
I knew you weren't going to let it go.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Zapata, did you finish with your description of what it is you're proposing?
Oh, so again, I added a couple of columns if the council is good with it. I added, again, the goal numbers. I figured it might help us kind of get to which goal we're referring to or which item within the goal we're referring to. I also added a priority column as we're hoping to prioritize. We can add a number in there. I added a timeline, a cost, a progress line, and an expected completion date line. That hopefully is will be helpful. Not all to be done today, but just information that we can use for the future as we continue working through these.
Okay, we're passing out a lot of paper. Are we all together? Does everybody understand what it is that Councilmember Zapata is proposing in terms of how we collate this and aggregate it? Any questions of Councilmember Zapata? Okay, now, Vice Mayor McLaughlin, I want to make sure, because the mayor has a suggestion on the floor, which is an alternative to going through these the way that's outlined here. And is there consensus around that?
I guess I was busy shuffling through and somewhat upset.
Well, he can restate it. Can you, Mayor, can you restate it just briefly?
Okay. What I was suggesting was that we focus on the goals under each overarching goal. We focus on the goals. And on the overarching goals that have 10 or fewer, I mean, that have fewer than 10, we have three votes each. We will all vote on three of them, then we will collate our votes to see which ones have priority votes. And then if they have 10 or more, then we have seven votes.
Each, okay.
Each.
So question on that.
Yes.
So you're saying that each of us would identify three priority objectives?
No, not objectives, goals.
Well, but I think Vice Mayor is referring to, when she says goals, she's referring to the six big goals. And I think when she talked about objectives, she's talking about those that we went through and we said, these are aspirational, these are in progress.
Right, but with our current system, we have overarching goals, which were the six. Then we have the goals, which are broken down. And then there's objectives, which are even more granular.
Okay, so I get it. So you're talking about the, I guess I was still seeing them as objectives, but you're calling them goals versus overarching goals. Okay, so then...
As long as we're clear with the language.
I get it. I get the language. So it's three votes per, three priorities on the goals underneath every overarching goal that we each prioritize, that we say, hey, we think 1, 2, and 1, 6, and 8, or whatever. And then we tally them up, and if there's more than 10, we each have...
If there's 10 or more, then we have seven votes.
Then we each have seven.
Right.
Okay.
Is there consensus around that? Yes, Councilmember Zapata, I'm sorry.
Mayor Martinez, question. So if some of them are left out, are we just saying that that is not a priority and we want to leave it out for a certain timeframe? Or what is it? I'm just being hypothetical. So the overarching goal number one has...
Seven goals.
Has seven goals, right? And if we only move forward with three, what's going to happen with the others?
Well, we do not have enough staff time to do all of them. So we will prioritize the ones that get the most votes, and the others can be considered with the understanding that it's not a priority.
Okay. One more thing. I would like us to at least consider, I agree with this process, but at least consider that in the course of the year or, you know, more than a year, some things may change based on various variables that, on foreseeing right now.
Yeah, I think it's understood that this is a fluid document and that our desires at this point may not be the same as our desires two years from now. But this is our starting point.
The point is well made. Two years ago, three years ago, we didn't know about COVID, which upset everything, which would have had you doing a lot of stuff. And something less than that could happen that would make you think, well, something else has become more urgent. Correct. Councilmember Zapata.
In what timeframe, too? Are we prioritizing, are we looking at the next year, next two years, three years, five years? Because I think that will help us prioritize, too. Like, this is a good goal for this next fiscal year? Or is it going to be a good goal for five years from now? Or is it that way? Because I might say, this is a good goal four years from today. Like, I'm not going to put it, I'm not going to give it a vote, maybe it'll catch on later. Or maybe I have to...
Yeah, I think what's important to you now is what we are voting for. So we prioritize our goals, and then we look at the timelines to see which goal, because we're going to have a lot of goals. The staff has their handful already, and we're going to hand them even more. So if some of them fall two years from now or four years from now, and others are more immediate, they're still going to stay very busy. And I think it's helpful to start on something that's going to take four years. I mean, you know, something that's four years from now, we need to start planning now if we want it to be successful.
Absolutely. And you have one that you, Councilmember Zapata, have championed. And it's the infrastructure needs, and especially thinking about railroad tracks, that can't be done in two or three years, as to the mayor's point. That's further out. But if you don't start four years from now, you will not do anything. So, okay. Councilmember Robinson.
A question that I have is around interpretation of goals and objectives. So, for instance, A1, oh, 1A, sorry.
And one on the green sheet.
On the green sheet, 1A. Thank you, Councilmember Zapata, 1A, number one, is in increased housing access, especially infill development, and avoid the shoreline. I think it can be argued that 1B, 1C, 1D are also strategies to do that 1A.
I'm in agreement, and, but I do believe that those are strategies that are divergent from 1A.
Increased housing access? 1A is increased housing access.
Right, but if you look at the objective, it says, "Support the advancement of 2, 3 key low-income housing developments."
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that I believe that these are actually objectives that would fall under 1A as different objectives. Do you know what I mean? So the goal is to increase housing access, and the one way you could get there is by opening up public land to construct new housing. That is a strategy that you could use to increase housing access.
Yeah, and I guess my point is that, is that there's a very different approach in those strategies, and those strategies, I think, should be seen separate from things that are already happening.
So these are also in progress? They're all marked as in progress, so they're already happening as well? So I'm just saying that they're also, so objectives don't have to be the exact same strategy, right? If you have a goal, you can have a lot of divergent strategies to reach that goal, a lot of divergent objectives to reach the same goal, right? Different approaches. So I think that these three are actually different approaches to reach the same goal, which ultimately, the reason why you would open up public land to construct new housing is to increase housing access. That is the goal, right? That's why you would do that.
Right, but the major difference is that, on one, we're dealing with land that's already allocated, and on the other, we're looking at more land which hasn't been allocated, which is a major difference. And would require a different quality staff time.
So maybe what we would need then is, I think that, I guess what I'm saying is that these three goals seem to be related, and maybe they're not actually goals, they're objectives, and maybe there's an overarching goal that actually holds all three objectives. Because it's basically identifying new opportunities for, to build housing, right?
I think, you can't talk with my glasses in the mouth. I think what Councilmember Robinson is referring to, if you look at the first goal, and I think that's the point she's making. You see the first big goal? That was our first big goal. And I think that's the point you were making.
Not exactly, but fine. I guess my thing is I don't think these are three separate things. I think they're objectives to reach the goal of increasing access to housing, creating more housing, but through new locations, you know?
Okay, I see them related, and that's why they're under the overarching goal.
Okay.
But I see them as different.
Since some of those are under what we have referred to as objectives, which is...
I respectfully disagree, but that's fine.
No, no, but I'm just making your point, though. I think a lot of what you said is under here, is under that big, broad goal. I think that's what you're making. Yes, I think, right?
It's not exactly, but that's okay. I'm willing to let it go.
I don't want to talk for you. Okay, all right, so where are we?
That's where my question is, where are we? Last time, we were going through each item and then specifying whether they were an IP or an A. Staff, thank you, staff, they've gone through it already, and they've already done that for us. And that's where we left off in Goal 2, right? We finished Goal 2, we were going through that. Do we need to do that again? Or do we just say, since staff already did it, we can move on to the next part and...
I believe we can move on.
Yeah.
Which is why I say, thank staff over and over and over for the work that they've done.
Okay, so now are we then going back to the beginning and then prioritizing, like the mayor was saying? That's where we are?
Well, the mayor...
Actually, I was wanting to start with 3, because we've already discussed 1 and 2, but we have not discussed 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Well, that was my question. So we did 1 and 2, but we were, what we were discussing was whether they were in progress or they were, if it was either an IP or an A.
We said aspirational and progress.
Yeah, aspirational or not. So that's what we were doing in the last meeting, right? We were saying this goal, IP, A, IP, A. And we were discussing some of the items that we were going. Are we still thinking of that, or are we going to now prioritize? Are we going to prioritize and we're starting from Goal 3?
I'm trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
Okay, you got to have one conversation.
Okay, if it's a pleasure of the council, we could start at 1 and just vote.
Why don't we start with 3, just to make sure, and then if you have time, we'll come back to 1 and 2, because we already discussed them. I think number 3 is very simple and easy.
Again, you're beating. The mayor has made a suggestion.
All right, so it sounds like, I hear one person saying that they agree that we start with 3, so we will start with 3.
Okay, all right, let's bring up 3. And so now, what you want to do is start your voting process?
Yes, I think we should have 10 minutes to review it.
Okay.
And then if there's questions, we can ask questions. And we can, if there's not questions, you know, just go ahead and vote as you see them.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment to simplify this section, if I may.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
My comment is that I already asked for half a million dollars for wildfire mitigation and emergency preparedness. We have Item 4F in the new sheet that was given to us, improve emergency response and preparation is the goal. Under objective, we only have one item. I would like to move Items 4G to the same line under objective. There are many of these items go under the same objective of emergency preparedness. So Items 4G, 4H, 4I, 4J.
I think we were at Goal 3.
It is 3.
That's 3?
3, we're starting with 3.
3, Goal 3 is 3.
I think you moved to...
I'm trying to simplify it. No, this is 3, attach.
No. No. This is Goal 4.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, all right, okay. Vice Mayor.
Excuse me.
And then, Vice Mayor.
Oh, yeah, I did have my hand up. Thank you for remembering. My question was that, so the idea is to pick out three of our highest priorities. Is it...
Seven if there are 10 or more.
Okay, so that would be seven on number 3, which we're starting on. And do we rank those seven, or do we just identify seven?
Just identifying.
Okay.
And the rank will show up in how many votes they get.
Okay.
Okay, are we clear? Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like when Councilmember Robinson was talking about compile some of the goals in the first overarching goal, and he was, no, let's make this different. And now Council Bana is saying, let's combine them. I feel like we should have the same process, just leave it as it is, if this is how we are going to do it.
So, I mean, was that a question?
It was a comment.
A comment, okay, all right. Okay, so now, are we clear on what we're going to do? We'll take 10 minutes?
Yes.
And by consensus, I didn't see anybody objecting wildly to the mayor's suggestion. So 10 minutes, and we're going to be working on 3.
On 3.
Right? Whose purse is this? Is there any money in it? Then I don't want it.
Seven votes.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
Yep.
That's why I was like, we should just...
I want a cookie, or should I have a cookie?
We should, we should...
I got your chair, so I can do the nickel.
Do we know you?
I'm missing the local...
That's, that is under, uh, four.
That's under, okay.
I need the, uh, the street safety plan.
Yeah, that's...
That's under four.
Yeah, that's under four.
I see this one.
We mark seven, am I right?
Yeah.
Can we move to the next one, and mark?
After, after we've had a chance to.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm moving on. People are industrious, we go and do the rest of it, which is good. That means, then we may not have too much. Ten, ten minutes, three, twelve.
I'm just, I finished those, I'm going to the next one.
Yeah, we move to the next one, and mark?
Um, after, after we've had a chance to.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'm moving on. People are industrious, we go and do the rest of it, which is good. That means, then we may not have too much. Ten, ten minutes, three, twelve.
I finished those, I'm going to the next one.
Yeah, we're just trying to narrow it down.
You got seven votes on this one?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
You got seven votes?
Yeah.
Some of these are receded, so we're just going to...
Yep. People are industrious, we go and do the rest of it, which is good. That means, then we may not have too much. Ten, ten minutes, three, twelve.
I'm just, I finished those, I'm going to the next one.
Yeah, we're just trying to narrow it down.
You got seven votes on this one?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
You got seven votes?
Yeah.
One of these are receded, so we're just going to...
Yep.
Clear again.
It'll be your votes on all of them.
Under C, am I right?
If I might.
Of course you might, right?
Yeah, we're still at three. Um, it's been brought to my attention, and, and Councilmember Robinson actually, uh, said that some of them are dupl- duplicative. And, uh, what I've done in looking at it is seeing, you know, where they're duplicated. Some are more expansive than others, you know, so, so some may contain...
Some of the sub...
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah, so, so, so when that's the case, I have voted for the more expansive item, so that it contains the, the others.
Okay, now, so we make sure that, um, we're all voting consistently. Well, consistent is the wrong way, wrong word. Well, no, consistently is right, in this case. People, some people have already ranked theirs now, so do you, are you suggesting that maybe when we go through these, if you see those, or do you want people to go through, it may be difficult for them now to go back and figure out where the duplication is? Have you, have you flagged some of those?
Uh, yes, I have.
With your consensus, can we hear the mayor's process suggestion? Uh, I think you heard what he said. Does he need to repeat it, is it clear? That he believes that some of these, and three, are duplicative, and so using his votes wisely, he is voting for the more expansive ones, because he thinks that some of the others where the duplication would fall under those. So he wants to use, but to be consistent now, we would need to try to do the same thing, so that your vote counts, the way you want it to count. Do you want Mr. Mayor to call out what those are, and see if you want to re-vote?
Yes, uh...
On three.
Okay, on, on three. For instance, improve maintenance of the built environment...
Tell us where you are.
Okay, I'm on three A.
Three A, and...
Improve maintenance of the built environment, parks, and new recreation infrastructure. Uh, we have, uh, three H, which is renovate and open park restrooms. So renovation of open park restrooms would fall under improved maintenance of the built environment. So I would, uh...
You combined those, and that became one of your votes.
Well, well, I, I didn't actually combine them, but I know just through logic that , uh, three H is included in three A.
Okay, okay, all right.
So I, I, I think, um, I think we're all intelligent enough to figure out which ones fall into what categories?
Well, we would question the council's intelligence.
Well, okay, uh, I, I know you would question my intelligence, but...
You knew I wasn't gonna let you go.
I know, I know, but...
No, your point is well made. Okay, so are we together?
And then, uh, improving lighting in parks, which is three J, would also fit under three A. So I would obviously go with three A, since that includes, uh, the lighting.
Okay.
So, so there's other issues like that?
Well, you might want to quickly look through the list and see where you think there is duplication, or there's one that is more expansive that would include...
Okay, well, then, uh, I would entertain council to go through, go through it and see...
Give it another two minutes, so people can quickly go and see where you think.
Sure.
Is that right, is that okay? Are we, is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Let's give it another two minutes. Quickly review and see if you see the more expansive ones that might capture ones that would fall underneath that, before you cast your vote. Are we good? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have a question on whether one thinks that, um, build three to four soccer fields would also...
What number is that?
That's three G.
Three G, okay.
In city parks would fit under improved maintenance of parks and the built environment. A lot fits into that one, frankly. Um, and also the increased, increased sidewalk repairs, because that's maintenance of the built environment.
Right, but, but it says, yeah, that's, that's true. And so, um, um, some items are so expansive, you know, like the sidewalks, I mean, they're in parks, but they're, you know, I mean, uh, it's such a large item that I'm sure, uh, that for me, it would, it should be considered separate.
Councilmember Robinson?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion that we break up that goal? So it's two parts at the end. So part one are things that include improving maintenance of the built environment, that's just maintenance, things that already exist, maintaining them better. And then a new goal that could encompass some of these things is creating new recreational infrastructure, um, because there are soccer fields and other things that fit under there because it's new. Um, and, and then the other one could just be improving maintenance.
So you're suggesting a new goal?
I'm suggesting a new goal and a rearrangement of, of objectives. So under this, this new goal, um, we could move the library, uh, actually, that's renovation, that's maintenance and improvement of, of big things that exist. So those things will all exist there, and then the creation of new things like soccer fields could be under this new goal, that's creation of new recreation infrastructure.
Okay, um, if I might, I, I actually read, uh, this, uh, maintenance of the built environment, okay, so, so parks and, uh, I, I read built environment as, as, as pertaining to the parks.
Built environment, comma, parks, comma, and new recreation infrastructure.
Right.
So built environment in my, I think I wrote this one, in my brain was like, uh...
Every building in the city of Richmond?
Yeah, because, I mean, I, I guess this came up because we have a lot of rich assets, right? Like, things that Richmond, the city of Richmond owns that we don't take care of well.
Right.
That need roofs that need, you know, maintenance and that are being neglected. And so the, the idea was that we, you know, focus more attention and have a plan for maintenance of the existing assets.
Mm-hmm.
And the second part, which probably should have broken off into its own thing, is the creation of new assets.
Right.
Well, so we don't lose that if there's consensus around that, and if that's a suggestion for a new goal, we need to capture it.
I, I agree, and I think we could call it three G in place of building the, the three soccer fields, which can still be an objective, but that would fit under the goal of new recreation infrastructure, is that where you were going? Yeah.
All right, so, if there's a direct comment on that, we'll hear that now, because I want to make sure we record this, because we come back and you don't see it. I'm gonna say, well, it went right past us, yes.
As an, as an English teacher, I would say that the proposition of the built environment, parks, and new recreation infrastructure is, is what we're talking about, improved maintenance. So, uh, uh, we have the new things separate from this, uh, which is why I didn't think that, uh, that the new recreation infrastructure was, was, was part of it.
I'm not there, are you debating the proposition?
No, I, 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 I'm debating, uh, what improved maintenance is referring to.
Okay, so do we need clarification on that?
Yeah, maybe what we could do to solve this is just take that comment, turn it into an and, and then break off the and new recreation infrastructure to a new, a new goal, the three G. Um, so we say improved maintenance of the built environment and parks, and improved maintenance of parks, you know? And then, so it's all about maintenance on built, on everything, on things the city owns, improving maintenance. And then, and then the next thing, we break it off and make it separate, which it really is separate, is creating new infrastructure, because that's a whole other bag, right? It's more responsibility, it's more money, it's more, more staff, it's more stuff, you have more infrastructure.
Okay.
So then that would, that would include, uh, create dog parks, create a bike park, uh...
Yep.
Um, community centers in every corridor?
Yep.
And...
That's all new recreation infrastructure.
Okay, so, um, let's see, well, so then, uh, we have infrastructure capital needs, which is...
So we, we're all staying together, what line are you on?
Uh, three X infrastructure capital needs, wouldn't that, uh, be the same as improved maintenance?
So, um, so I think, I'm not sure how this got phrased this way, I don't think that's the way I originally phrased it, but I think this was mine, too. And this had to do more with including, um, all of the infrastructure projects that we wanted to move forward on the capital improvement plan, um, budget. Because I feel like there's things that are missing from that capital improvement budget, and it's hard to know when there's money available, where it should go to if not all projects are listed. So I don't, it kind of got reduced to this through the different iterations, but that was my original intent.
Yeah, because, I mean, I guess this came up because we have a lot of rich assets, right? Like, things that Richmond, the city of Richmond owns that we don't take care of well.
Right.
That need roofs, that need, you know, maintenance and that are being neglected. And so the, the idea was that we, you know, focus more attention and have a plan for maintenance of the existing assets. And the second part, which probably should have broken off into its own thing, is the creation of new assets.
Right.
Well, so we don't lose that if there's consensus around that, and if that's a suggestion for a new goal, we need to capture it.
I, I agree, and I think we could call it 3G in place of building the, the three soccer fields, which can still be an objective, but that would fit under the goal of new recreation infrastructure. Is that where you were going? Yeah.
Alright, so if there's a direct comment on that, we'll hear that now because I want to make sure we record this because we come back and you don't see it. I'm gonna say, well, it went right past us. Yes.
As an, as an English teacher, I would say that the preposition of the built environment, parks, and new recreation infrastructure is, is what we're talking about, improved maintenance. So we have the new things separate from this, which is why I didn't think that, that the new recreation infrastructure was, was, was part of it.
I'm not there. Are you debating the proposition?
No, I, I, I'm debating what improved maintenance is referring to.
Okay, so do we need clarification on that?
Yeah, maybe what we could do to solve this is just take that comment, turn it into an and, and then break off the and new recreation infrastructure to a new, a new goal, the 3G. So we say improved maintenance of the built environment and parks, and improved maintenance of parks, you know. And then, so it's all about maintenance on built, on everything, on things the city owns, improving maintenance. And then, and then the next thing, we break it off and make it separate, which it really is separate, is creating new infrastructure. Because that's a whole other bag, right? It's more responsibility, it's more money, it's more, more staff, it's more stuff, you have more infrastructure.
Okay.
So then that would, that would include create dog parks, create a bike park, um...
Yep.
Um, community centers in every corridor?
Yep.
And...
That's all new recreation infrastructure.
Okay, so, um, let's see, well, so then we have infrastructure capital needs, which is 3X.
So we, we're all staying together. What line are you on, Mr. Mayor?
3X, infrastructure capital needs. Wouldn't that be the same as improved maintenance?
So, um, so I think...
3X.
And so I think this, I'm not sure how this got phrased this way, I don't think that's the way I originally phrased it, but I think this was mine too. And this had to do more with including all of the infrastructure projects that we wanted to move forward on the capital improvement plan budget. Because I feel like there's things that are missing from that capital improvement budget, and it's hard to know when there's money available, where it should go to if not all projects are listed. So I don't, it kind of got reduced to this through the different iterations, but that was my original intent.
What's she saying? I can't tell. I can't tell. Okay, I'm trying to figure out where we are.
Me too, I just asked.
Because, because we're now...
Okay, so it is my understanding that we have separated improved maintenance of the built environment parks and parks from the new recreation infrastructure. Is that correct?
If everyone's in agreement, that would be correct.
Okay, so, so that would lower the number of items and possibly change the number of votes, but we'll see.
Still to go. Twenty-nine items, we haven't reached enough until we're done.
Okay, so then 3A would include...
You're combining 3E with 3F, is that what you said?
Yeah, we're going over our agenda with three, and it looks like we have to write some notes here. I mean, 3F and 3H would go under 3A.
3E also.
And, so then improved maintenance of the built environments, the built environment the same as repairs and landscaping of public property? Yes? Okay, then yes, then, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's go down.
Yes.
3B would be, we'll say that 3B is new recreation infrastructure.
So that would be 3G.
So, so, so 3B, so create dog parks is 3B, create a bike park is 3B.
And create bike parks is what you're...
3G.
3G.
3G is the new number for creating new infrastructure and recreation.
Wait, 3G?
Yeah, we're basically swapping out the soccer as a goal and making creating new recreation infrastructure as the goal, and the soccer thing moves to the objective.
Well, why not create dog parks?
No, so, yeah, so, so basically, 3G, if I had my computer and I could change it all, would now read, instead of reading build three soccer fields, that gets erased, and it would instead read create new recreation infrastructure. And then the objectives under 3G would be, the first one would be this one, building three soccer fields, and then the next one would be create dog parks, and the next one would be create bike parks.
So it's just a matter of how you want to order them?
Yeah, the overarching thing is creating the infrastructure.
Right, and then the park is new infrastructure, bike park is new infrastructure, you know, so, so what you want to do is, 3G is now 3B?
3G.
3B is not 3G.
Yeah, is what you said.
Either way, they both work.
Yeah, well...
It doesn't matter. If you'd like it to be 3B, it could be 3B.
No, no, what I'm saying is that new recreation infrastructure is 3B.
Okay.
Yeah. Because if we call build three for soccer fields 3B, then all the others don't fit.
Okay.
So, so 3A is improved maintenance of the built environment. So, so, so we can say that create dog parks is 3B.
I, I disagree on that. I thought we said that if we want to make it 3B, it would be new recreation infrastructure for 3B. Creating a dog park would be a new recreation infrastructure.
Right, so, so that's 3B.
Dog park moves to objective versus the goal line.
Right, okay, maybe I missed a giraffe.
So, so create dog parks is 3B, create a bike park is 3B.
And you have one more, is that it?
Okay.
Building the soccer fields.
Right, uh-huh, and then, so, Martin Luther King?
What item are we on?
3K.
3K. Call up, call up numbers if you can, so people can quickly find out where you are.
Well, let's get consensus on this. 3K is also part of 3B?
It could be, it would technically be new because it does not exist.
Right.
You know?
Okay. Community centers in every corridor, that would be 3B.
Yep.
So you're saying 3L is also 3B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, L, 3B.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, under 3M, improved parking accessibility, I think that goes with goal, overarching goal number four, because we also have it there, and that has a lot more information about parking under overarching goal four.
Okay, so, so you want to move 3M to four?
Yeah, it would fall under 4Q.
4Q?
We put a note there that that should be goal 4Q, then when we get to the other one, that one's, that part of the structure.
Okay, any others? We're still on three.
Okay, so we have one that crosses both borders. It says increase...
What item are you on?
3T.
T as in papa?
T, as in, as in tomato.
Oh, T, or T, okay.
It says increase, but it's slash improve, more basketball courts. So I would say that's 3B because it says increase.
I'd actually put an objective under each. You know, one is increase basketball courts under the, under 3B, and then one is improve under 3A.
Okay, so it would be 3A and also 3B.
The other one that I think we can combine with overarching goal four is 3I, increased sidewalk repairs. I think we were referring to this earlier as well, but whether it increased sidewalk repairs in parks, then it might remain here, but if it's overarching sidewalk repairs, item 4A, overarching goal 4A, has more information about sidewalks, and it goes into the type of sidewalks.
Public safety.
Why is it 3D?
3I.
It's because some of these goals are very similar in other, or some of these smaller goals are very similar to the, on other overarching goals, so...
Yeah, but I just feel like also, we are talking here about the goal of improving quality of life, and I don't know, I, I just feel like having better sidewalks is also part of these, so I will recommend that we leave it here and instead of moving it in another, in another poll.
I just think that if we have the same goal in two, right, because we're, like, in the next page, when we get to overarching goal four, we're only going to get three votes, possibly. So there, if we put it on the sidewalk, and then on this one, if we already gave one vote, and we're giving away two of our votes when it's the same outcome. Alright, so we should combine it, that would, if sidewalks are important, we should have it in one place and then put our vote there.
But, but it's not just going to be sidewalk, it's going to be other things as well. So, so, you know, I'm sure you're not going to vote on something just because sidewalks are there, you're going to vote on it because it has other things. And, and, you know, I would actually argue to take sidewalks out of four and leave it in three because it's, it's infrastructure.
So moving four, 4A to three, yeah, either way, I'm just saying we should put it in one place and not have it in multiple locations, I don't care which way.
Okay, well, I actually disagree. I, I think it should, should remain as is.
You mean it's staying in both places?
Right, yeah.
So it's staying in the same place?
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Bonner did everything.
I just wanted to share my concern about this speed of things. One hour passed, we only have two more hours, so let's expedite.
It's true.
Have we just, now that we're on three, just say what our votes are and move on?
Well, we've, we're consolidating, so our votes will be different.
Well, let's see what our votes are. It may not need it. I mean, if you vote for something like along improving existing recreation or whatever, all the other objectives that we consolidate will come under it anyway.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
In my opinion, you're the boss.
Well, no, right now, you're, if all of you are equal, except as one of our professors said, but the mayor is a little bit more equal than the others.
So, so I would say that we consolidate, consolidate 3A, and if your vote is for one of the others, let's say, for instance, you choose to vote for maintain and improve parks, that would go under 3A, and so we can say that your vote was 3A.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, and then I'm gonna make a process suggestion for you.
Just a quick question, I know the discussion has been on these sidewalk repairs, and I thought that would go under 3A as well, improved maintenance of the built environment and parks. Sidewalks are the built environment, so maintaining them, I think, that could be under, right? So we don't use up too many of our votes on the built envi, on, you know, maybe we can't have enough votes at the built environment.
That's a suggestion, but I'm going to make a process suggestion because as Councilmember Bonner has called to our attention, we still have three more to go.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we take two minutes and vote and see where the votes land?
Thank you.
And then I think you're going to see where, for example, if we're fairly close in a vote, and I say, well, wait a minute, I'll change my vote if you combine it with this and whatever. Otherwise, we're gonna, we're never going to get to four, five, and six.
Right.
Can you summarize what we did because I am getting really confused?
Yes.
So what are the, the things, like, can somebody?
You're going, what?
No, 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 what were the changes and how, because I don't see the changes on the screen, and I have been just getting confused.
So, actually, they did make the changes already?
Where?
Uh, oh, no, oh, no, okay. So, so we have not made any changes? And so not having made any changes, we go with the votes as the paper is, and then we can debate as to whether or not the vote should be moved.
Okay, yeah, okay, so we go with what we have without any changes and then, okay.
It just throws everything off.
Well, with the understanding, I think, otherwise we just wasted five minutes. With the understanding, the conversation that we had, that I think everybody was part of, that the mayor had made some suggestions, he started out by saying that I think there's some duplication, and I think we were clear on, oh, we're clear, on what he was recommending that might be combined, and by consensus, I heard, yeah, that seemed okay. And Councilmember Robinson made some suggestions, we haven't gotten to her, had a goal yet, but she made some suggestions about areas where she thought that could, could be combined. And so you can consider that in your vote so that you don't, quote, waste a vote. But...
Yeah, but one thing is this whole discussion we had on bifurcating 3A and putting new recreation infrastructure into 3B, I thought we were all good with that. And then we could change it on the screen. 3A is improvement of maintenance of the built environment and parks, and then put new infrastructure under 3B. That will give that overall look. We don't have to change everything else, right?
Well, no, we don't have to change a, a lot of other things because we have new infrastructure and we have improved maintenance.
Are you able to keep up with that?
So...
If we can do that quickly, but I'm really going to push you, our seven o'clock is going to come sooner, right?
Thank you.
At 6:59, the mayor has to leave.
May I suggest we all spend time and mark our priorities? It's okay if our priorities coincide and fall under the same goal, different objectives, that's perfectly all right. Let's just do it, see what we come up with, relax the city manager to categorize them all together in the groups.
Okay, we're, we're gonna call for a vote in two minutes.
Because at the, at the end, I assume that among the six main goals, then we need to consider some priority as well, so we really need time to move on.
All right, you may, you may decide something else.
I actually, so I just feel like this is a little bit simpler than, than all that. Like, if, she's already done it here, we split that up. So now, if we could just go down and quickly tell her, you know, that, starting with the dog parks, which was 3B, if you can add that as an objective under 3B, the current 3B.
Can you keep up with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Cut and paste.
Yeah, cut and paste. We can make it pretty later. And then the next, the next one would be...
Excuse me a minute, sorry.
I'm just doing what you, what you did.
Shall we start with 3A? I mean, let's start at the beginning, 3A.
And go down the list.
Like adding all the things that are 3A?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
And if there's objection, you need to say it because this is your time, because I am going to push you unless you throw me out.
So now, going back to 3A.
So 3E?
No, no, so 3A, so if you're saying 3A, definitely you can remove 3E. What you might be able to do in here, a suggestion, is if you make a line under 3A, the third one, I think that you can draw a, improve the instructor, and you can draw some sort of, in there, put in a alt-enter. If you do an alt-enter, you can draw another line right under it, and then you say 3G.
Would you, would you like to do that, or, or would you like to let staff do their job? Cesar, Cesar. Okay, so, 3F would also be 3A?
By consensus, right?
3H, also 3A.
Renovate new park restrooms.
3J.
3K.
3A.
Let's read out what it is. Build the Martin Luther King Jr.'s Community Center, okay?
Now, I have a question about 3M.
Improved parking accessibility? 3M, is the mayor...
So that would be 3A also.
By consensus?
Did you say all of these are 3A?
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, I guess 3P is 3A.
3P is in papa?
3Q would be 3B.
Mr. Mayor, can I suggest that 3O is also 3A? Establishing a tree long-term maintenance plan? That has to do with maintenance?
So we're, we're thinking of...
3O. Pretty maintenance plan.
So that would be 3A and 3B.
3A.
But aren't we going to be planting new trees?
But I think I get, let's, let's make it simple, I think it's, it's 3A.
Councilmember Jimenez, we can't hear you.
I think...
I'll vote for 3B.
Okay, Councilmember Jimenez has the floor. Go ahead.
Never mind.
Can I say a little bit about that? So this came up, this was one of my items, and this came up from Richmore Village, they have a number of street trees, many, many street trees, that are at the end of their, their lifecycle.
Right.
And they haven't been, they haven't been maintained through their lifecycle, so they're, they create hazard, so that's one, is that they should have had a maintenance plan. And two, now that they're all kind of expiring at the same time, it's a major issue to deal with a whole neighborhood of adult, you know, fully grown trees that you need to, you know, deal with vines and whatnot. And this is not the only place in Richmond that's going to face this, as we build the urban forest, this major effort building, you know, planting thousands of trees, we actually need a plan to maintain those trees during their lifetimes, and then also a plan that, that predicts their expiration, so that we're ahead of the problem. So this is about putting that plan together, not really about replacing, like actually replacing the trees. It's like thinking ahead, we know if we planted these trees today that they live 70 years, so and we need to make sure that we know that in 70 years, we're going to have major infrastructure improvement.
So what is your recommendation?
I think that it's a maintenance issue that we... I think that it's a maintenance issue, that we need to have a maintenance plan, and that it should be under 3A. Because it's not actually calling for the actual replacement at this point. It's a plan so that we know when these things need to happen.
So, okay.
So, quickly, the suggestion is to do what, Councilmember Robinson?
Under 3A.
And is moving which item, 3...
Moving 3O to 3A.
To 3A? Is there consensus?
Yeah, I was just curious, there are streets that need new trees, so...
That would be a different issue. Like, I wasn't talking about the urban forest and expanding things. I was talking about all the trees that we currently have planted that we don't have maintenance plan for.
So, the new trees would be 3A, but, I mean, 3B.
If we wanted to prioritize planting more new trees, then it would be 3B.
That's right.
All right, okay, by consensus? Everybody get that? Okay, moving on. What else do you have? It's time to vote. For better and for best. For better and for best, it's time to vote. How many votes do you have?
3W.
You still have some more?
3W is 3A.
I thought you had a meeting.
I do, but I also have an objective.
All right, let's hear it.
3W?
3W, we are 3W. 3W.
3A.
3A.
Moving 3W to 3A, is that...
Okay.
Increased lighting, is that what we're doing? We're moving it to 3A? Okay, anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No, there's a little...
Renovation plans.
Is there? Is there?
All right, it's time to vote. And you still get seven votes. But because you took so long, you're only gonna get six. Seven votes.
Are we gonna do this?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Share a token?
Ooh, you gotta tell them now? Yes. Could you, to speed up this process, could you write down? Do you have paper you can write down your votes on? And indicate the number, and then LaShonda's gonna help me tally them quickly.
We want our names, or do we want them on a...
No, 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 this is, no, this is secret ballot.
Not that we care.
Does anybody have these people write their votes? Well, hi, everyone.
Is that yours?
I'm taking six of them still, Ed.
No, Seesaw was using stickers. And no stuff in the ballots, please.
Darn.
I was planning on it, grabbing two stickers.
Ah, something upside please, or what? 3H. 3H is doing away and...
That's 3A. Just 3A.
3A?
Yeah.
Okay, 3H. Improving lights in part 3H.
You don't have to spend all your seven votes.
We can't do this.
Who are we giving to? Sorry, we were just taking a break. I wanna make it fast to urge others to hurry up.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll give it to LaShonda, she can start.
3B, 3A.
LaShonda, that's one. You should end up with six. Thank you. Oh, look at that, that's small, ain't it? Oh, yeah, you're writing names. No secret ballot. Yeah. No secret ballot.
Oh, my goodness, my spine.
See, it's a test. This is a secret ballot. Then when the votes come out, you can say any vote, right?
How do we do this? I don't know. There you go.
One done.
I had one that I had 29.
Yes, the other ones will go next.
I've already done mine.
So, did you count the ones that were eliminated, or only ones that remain?
What?
Did you count the ones that got consolidated as your votes? Or did you...
No, the ones that consolidated, uh... Where they... 1A, I mean, 3, 3B, with 3 other votes. I was able to shift the other ones.
I just crossed the other ones out, knowing that staff will put them on as objectives.
I think this was an August one.
All right, so we've done this, at least we've heard the discussion.
3A, 3...
Okay. I can start looking at this one.
It's like Christmas.
Three votes.
I think it's seven on the next one, too, I guess.
Let's see.
Can we do get seven votes on this one? Did we get seven votes on this one? It didn't...
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't use all those seven of mine. I deleted the ones that were important. Up to seven. Up to seven. Very, no. Don't take that away in my favor. If you take any longer, it's gonna be five. One, two, three, four, five. I have five.
A couple of things, I think we should take out the prepare for sea level rise that comes in the...
That fits in with the...
Shoreline.
So, if you vote for one, you vote for the other.
Well, I don't wanna take up one of my votes for that. I think we could take that one out because out of...
No, I'm not saying we can vote for this, it's actually a vote for this.
If I vote for what?
Yeah, you only have to vote for one of them because they're the same thing.
3A? 3A? Okay, 3A.
Some of us are just...
Well, actually, I'm forging ahead because I have to leave, and I wanna make sure my vote is down.
Okay, we're gonna give those out, or not?
Oh, I need more stickies.
You need more stickies. Oh, we all need more stickies.
So, this is my four, this is my five.
I've got my six, too.
And I'm going to my six now.
Yeah, then 3, like, and then 1, 2.
Yeah.
Actually, some of us are already doing four. May I say something, Mr. Mayor?
You should be.
Before you vote for number one, I think number one is missing something. I had added promote homeownership, and it's not there. So, please, add it there and vote for it, too. Thank you. Number one, goal one, about housing, promote homeownership. Is it?
It's under 1F.
Oh, okay.
It's under prevent housing instability.
Got it, got it. Well, it's different, it's different from all that. I mean, it's not housing instability, it should be a separate thing by itself, please. Thank you. It's okay, don't worry about it. After voting, leave it as is. Thank you. We'll have better chances. Thank you, because people don't know it's... Okay, thank you. Yep, yep. Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Melvin is not here. He told me that, too, yeah.
He told me that he wanted to hear everything I said.
Well, if you're stuffing ballots, I got a call from that base.
We just received a... It's an absentee ballot. And Councilmember Jimenez, we're asking you to vote now, certify that it's valid. The person who raised it first.
I believe so.
We're just doing the law?
Yes.
And make sure that at the top, you put before you're doing, right?
You say four, if you say four. I didn't do that, but I put four.
Yeah, that's what I...
3A, 3B, 3C.
Right, right, right.
Well, finally removing, I'm happy now. Shall we prioritize the order of 1 to 6?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, this is Stella. Next one. It depends on the question. We have to go back to 1A and 1, or 1 and 2 as well, right?
I'm going to, oh, you're tired of picking up...
5, 4, I need 6.
So, we're still 4.
In overarching, in overarching goal 2, it looks like goal 2D and 2E are the same goal. Different objectives, but the same goal.
Councilmembers, may I, can we just give us all a little bit more time to get through it all, but keep that thought? And because I just, I'm still on 5, but I wanna get to 6 and then back to 1 and 2.
Okay, so we're moving ahead. So, you're now looking forward to some consolidation.
We're doing our votes already.
I think we're just voting.
Yeah.
Mr. Gardener.
We're moving forward. So, here's, there's fours.
Only give me four.
Okay.
Really?
No, no, you know what I mean, goal four. That's what you're giving me now, right?
Overarching goal four.
Goal four, okay.
Why don't we give you just all?
No, because I mixed them up. I wanna keep them separate.
Now, 5.
Okay, and I don't have all the fours yet. I'll leave them there, some fours. No, I'm not gonna mix them up. Okay, they can start off with one? Okay, okay. They said they're gonna keep voting. They're not having any more discussion, they're tired of talking. That's four, that's four. Did you give me a four yet? Okay, I'm trying to get them started.
A question, so on district, district, on goal overarching goal 5, there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, so we only choose 3? Is that correct?
That's what you decided.
Overarching goal 4, there's 18, 7, 7.
7, yes.
You only voted for 3?
So, just so, Vice Mayor, just remind us, on goal 4, say it again, Councilman.
On goal 4, there was enough different, um, goal, on overarching goal 4, there was enough goals for us to vote for 7 projects. But now, on goal overarching goal 5, there isn't enough to do the 7, so we only choose 3 goals.
That is correct. That's what you decided.
My advertisement worked. The lyric actually is the best. Oh, what's wrong with that? You don't like lung? I think it. What do you like over in Greece?
Living life.
We're gonna move on. Yes, thank you.
Actually, I went over mine earlier today.
What?
I went over mine earlier today.
Oh, okay, that was why, yeah. I can't get it down to 3. Kurt's... Wish one of these would fit into something else. Maybe this doesn't need it. I think I got it, all right?
Thank you. I'm gonna keep 4 straight. This one, 4? This is 4? Here are more for 4. How many more do we need?
Okay.
Yes.
Next. When you were gone, Lisa wanted to share a little bit of a change on something, and I said, "Well, let's wait until we..." Been here, but maybe you should ask him. I actually have... I actually...
I don't want Cassian to talk, I'm trying to talk him out, but he's my...
My feeling.
Thank you.
My feeling.
We're going to ask for the next question. We're going to ask for the next question. Want to figure out where the...
Is that even answered?
Okay. I'll take it for you.
Are all the votes in? All the votes are in?
Yes. Everybody vote this?
With your permission, we're going to take a five-minute break. The city clerk is timing us. So it's five minutes. Can I bring up where we're supposed to be? They're tallying the votes. What I had suggested was that about this time, that we start establish timeframes for each of the objectives. So when you get them, if you can start... Pulled out one of them last time, and I didn't get chastised for that. And it was the website. You know, that probably is one...
I don't know if your mic is on.
Oh. They keep telling... We're starting the meeting again. Honorable councilmembers, while we were waiting for the final tally of votes, I thought we might do a time check and see where we are. The question was raised whether or not we will get to establishing timeframes, timelines for these objectives. I have that on the agenda, that we would try to get through that. I think what I have for identifying appropriate lead roles, we don't need to do that today because quite frankly, a lot of that's on the fault of staff. And so Shasta and the management leadership team will be going through that and deciding, is it the library director? Is it the public works director? Is it fire chief? A few of those, though, will land in your court. And I can think of what some of those are. But especially when we talk about regional collaboration, I think of one a lot, homelessness. Working with the county, that's going to require some lifting by the elected officials as well, in addition to the staff. But most of that is going to land with the council. I mean, with the staff. So as we go through that, we probably will have a little bit of times. We don't need to spend a lot of time on that one and spend more time establishing these timeframes. Yes, councilmembers?
I wonder if we can talk now and kind of make it official whether or not we agree that we would like staff to fill in the columns that Councilmember Zapata has added, but not in this meeting, but after this meeting. I think that if we kind of need to say that officially and give that direction. And I just wanted to know if everyone, if all the council people would be in agreement that, you know, as a next step, that we would like staff to complete the columns on percentage of progress. So we get an understanding of what IP means. Is it 10%? Is it 5%? Is it 90%? Expected completion date, which is, you know, how long you think this thing is going to take to do. And then I think which year that it happens in is what we're going to do now, like in this next item. And then we prioritize them already as well. So, but for those two columns, the percentage of progress and expected completion date, we, I would like to kind of make a motion to direct staff to do that after, as a next step after this meeting.
I second.
Question. Are we also going to want to do the cost? So that they can give us sort of an estimated cost?
Yeah. Yeah, I missed that one.
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion on the floor. Let you chair.
Yes.
It's an official motion. And let's make sure we get it recorded, because I don't want us to come back and say, well, that was never voted on, because I did have it.
Right. So the motion was to complete the categories at the front. Goal, I mean, priority, timeline, and cost. And progress. And progress.
Didn't hear you comment.
Expected completed date.
Okay. Want to make sure that it all gets on the record. Okay, Mr. Mayor, you still chair now. You have a motion of the second.
Right, so we have a motion from Jimenez. Well, first, we have to have the motion before you can amend it.
Robinson.
So who?
Robinson.
Okay, Robinson.
Seconded by Jimenez.
Okay, and Jimenez seconded.
Right.
All right, now.
Either column to a short term or a long term.
That would cover the...
I think we're doing that in a very clear question.
Okay, so.
Is that right? I want to say something that's not right. Is that right, Councilmember Zapata?
Just to be clear, my motion is to ask staff, direct staff, to complete columns I wish I had better. I say, column D, column... No.
C and D.
B is in...
No, C is in Caesar.
C is in...
D is in Gloria.
C, D, and...
I, J.
I and J, for those with a better I sight than I.
Okay. Now, the motion has been clarified. It hasn't been received, just clarified. So, Mr. Mayor, it's back to you. You have a motion, you have a second.
Right.
And you withdrew your amendment.
Yes, so it's time for a vote.
Time for a vote, Mayor.
Okay. So all votes in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposition? No opposition and no issues.
We're not abstention, not yet.
Yeah.
No.
One was asked, okay? So pass.
We do have a provisional ballot. And... Tell me again, what is the clarification?
Someone voted for goal number one.
One.
Essentially four. Someone put E slash F combined.
What? So what is the... We will, the election clerk will allow for provisional ballot to be examined. And we will count it.
So I was thinking that they should be in my bed. I didn't want to go through all and slow down the process. So I'm... So F? That wasn't mine. Okay.
Okay. The election clerk has certified that provisional ballot is approved and made me count it.
Yes, thank you. If I, we are still missing...
For goal one, we're missing two votes.
For goal one.
Goal one, we're missing two votes.
Well, I have one. So now we're just missing one vote for goal one.
One vote.
Somebody submitted their ballot for goal one. You were moved.
I said one vote.
Oh, you didn't vote for your poll.
What did I say?
Goal one. Goal one, someone did not vote.
Did not vote at all?
We don't have a, we only have five slips for goal one. We only have five slips for goal two. We only have five slips for goal five. And only five slips for goal six.
No, man. Let me see if we can figure out whose ballot. Yeah.
But maybe councilmembers have figured out every vote counted.
Yeah, we're going to make sure. Okay. Let's hold for a second. No, because I thought... I didn't put any in my pocket. I told you it's not Chicago. I didn't put any of those votes in my pocket. Oh, God, I hope I didn't. No, what you gave me, Mayor, no, these were just a number for the seating. No, no, I know, that's what it is. No, these were your seat assignments. See, those aren't ballots. One of the three ballots was just... The election clerk did not put any ballots.
If Dan is saying they only add five out of six for certain overarching goals, perhaps we could redo those overarching goals since we all know...
Oh, okay, we have a suggestion. She's going to pass. Yeah, good suggestion, good suggestion.
Goal one, I don't know if this is mine. Is this, or any of these yours?
Mine was the one that was provisional, I don't know.
So why am I...
Mine that I bought for...
This is likely mine, but why?
I want to...
Why are you, why are you not submitting that for...
Henry, I gave you mine.
This one is mine for one.
But mine's... Yes, so...
This is mine.
So mine, yeah, and some of my shirts are missing also. I don't know how they disappeared.
This is literally like Chicago, man. I don't know. You know, I went to school there. I know how they count ballots. No, 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 no. Chicago is the only city in the world where dead people...
So which one?
Fifty years ago.
Goal one?
Fifty years ago. Are we figuring it out?
Yeah, so that's the goal one. For goal one, we do remember goal two.
Do you have an extra sheet of three? I think mine's missing.
I haven't attached anything.
You want it for now or forever?
Forever. Oh.
Well, let's ask staff. Which one are you missing?
Three.
For two.
The mayor needs sheet three. Here's his missing for some reason. I haven't attached a thing.
And mine's missing. Yeah, I think all of them are missing, or mine.
All of the votes are missing yours?
Yes.
Somebody's been tampering with the ballots.
Yeah, I gave them all to you. Who did you give them to?
I did.
Yeah, I pulled...
Stuck together?
Yeah, yeah.
He kept saying that...
And it has a number.
Let me tell you what that looked like. I thought these were receipt assignments.
No.
Then they put that in a cup.
No, those are his, I guess, right?
Yeah, those are mine.
I have six of them.
Because I gave you three earlier.
So those are, those are your votes?
Yeah, those are my votes.
He, there's too many votes from the mayor. Because he said he gave me three previously. There are four here. How do you get four seven times?
Yes.
You check best, best, and then put it in. I thought, though, you had the numbers that we put in a cup for, because it was one through six.
No.
I, you know what? I need to call the supervisor of the election clerk. Because there's some stuffing in the ballots going around here. Right in my pocket. I thought those, okay, you had them too many ago. He was being so secretive. Nobody else sold them, their whole set. They had me the whole sheet. Okay, all right, we got it straight. All right, now we're going to count your ballots. But why are you doing that?
Four, five, and six. Okay.
So we have, the election clerk is doing an excellent job. They caught that. Okay, so all of the ballots have now been counted. The provisional ballot has also been certified. And now they're going to have the tally for us in just a minute because they're already tallying most of them.
And hopefully you don't have to recount.
This is Chicago, it's so recount. They don't recount anything.
Pulling it out of the hat.
The show is the only city in the world. Always a secret.
Excuse me.
Married fifty years old people.
Facilitator, facilitator, I'd like to make the, just want clarity. So two members of the council for goal area two only provided three priorities. I don't know which council members those are, but you only put three down for two. But there were ten, there were ten goals, and so therefore you could have gotten seven votes. And someone only, two people only put down three.
Yeah, that was one of them.
One of them's you.
Was that intentional?
No.
Okay.
I decided three.
Got it.
Let's see where we are.
Okay.
You'll get, I'll give you 30 seconds to argue your point. If anybody missed that, where you were supposed to get seven votes and you only cast three, but you only get 30 seconds. Okay. We'll have the tally in just a minute.
Do we have to find out? Are we not going to give him the chance to add his four votes?
Yeah.
Now, that's sounding more like San Francisco. Talked about.
And who was the other person?
Let's see where you fall. Do you want to cast your...
If it doesn't matter.
It may matter. If you missed it. I can't really go on because we need to know for the vote so we can do the next part. And we really probably should not call for a public comment until we've done that. So we just got to pause for a minute.
Well, I think we can, right?
You could. You could. But I'm just thinking that about all the items. I'm just thinking that the public comment may be a comment on how you voted on some of these. But it's the mayor's call. This is an official meeting of the council. It's the mayor's call.
Were we supposed to vote after public comment?
So you could vote for second, right? You don't want to say it intentionally, just...
Thank you. Okay. All votes are in, the election is closed.
For now.
It's closed.
We considered the votes.
This is now the city of Richmond. The election is closed. We're counting... Did you see my election?
Councilmember Zapata has experienced.
Strike a record. Irene? Are we going to be able to show on the screen their votes?
Yes.
How much more time do we need? Okay. Don't go? Okay, all right. All right, we're getting close to the final count.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not violating the Brown Act. So there's a...
You know, Paulie and I have talked about it. It's just, I don't want to do a series because if she and they're talking... I don't know what, in terms of finding a space.
Do you want to comment? I think the son is typing them. Okay. We have them? Do we have them? Okay. The, uh, votes have been counted, and the results are going to be posted now.
In large, it's.
And, uh, I will need somebody who can see better than I.
Thank you.
Patrick, let's see. I need somebody to come over here and. Yeah, but somebody will still need to talk maybe from this. And so, tell us what we've got. Go on, there are six votes for A. For G. Okay. And so, you have six, five, and four are your top three. Six, four, and five.
A, F, and G are the top three.
A, F, and G. A received six, um, and one F received four, and one G received five. So, those are your top three. And then, do we need to review what those are?
No.
No. I heard yes and no. Yeah, they, oh, the comment was for the public. We probably should say what those are.
Yeah.
So, somebody who has better eyes.
Do you want me to, um, Henry, do, would you like for me to read?
That would, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Right. Um, into the record, for the record. One A is increase housing access, especially infield development. Avoid the shoreline, that was A. F is prevent housing instability with a variety of objectives. And G is to reduce homelessness with a variety of objectives.
Are we clear? Is that what you did? Is that what you intended? In a contest of the voting, the qualifications of the voters. Hearing none. This is your result. All right. So, we're going to push on now to, well, goal two, and then we'll come back and try to do the timer. Zeca? Zeca? Okay. Goal two, and you can read that because I can't.
So, one A has six votes.
One A has. Two A, six votes.
Two B has five votes.
Mm-hmm.
Two B has two votes. Two B has five votes. Two B has three votes. Two F has five votes. Two B has one vote. Two E has three votes. Two I has four votes. And two J has three votes.
And of these, you get three, is it top three?
Uh, seven.
Okay, you got a tie, okay?
Things where we get seven, right?
You, oh, you get seven, that's just the long list, okay. So, you have.
So, first, two A all have six.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have the.
Two B has five.
Two B has five.
Two C has. So, two C has five.
So, the first one was two A, that one had six. And then, two B had five.
Go to the next five.
And then, two D had five as well. And two F had five. And then, did you do two D and two B?
Now, you have one that's special. So, we, they get.
That's two.
You get seven of these.
That's three.
In conversation, we had suggested that two D and two E be combined because you're both revitalized existing small businesses.
Two E and two E.
Two D and two E.
And that was a consensus? That would give you eight if that's what you agreed to. I don't know. But you, you get, you get seven of this list, right?
So, two, two D and two.
So, we can hear you.
Two, two B is the fourth, so I think maybe it's, you meant to say.
I said two D.
Two D. No, two D and two E. Okay, good.
Two E and two B?
Yeah.
Two E.
E is in every, okay? E is in every.
So, then that would be one, because that would be eight votes. I don't know how that.
Yes, that would be one, that would be one vote. D and E is together.
So, combine D and E. So, they're at one, two, three, four. The next one would be two I, or is that L? I, two I, it had four votes.
Then.
And then, the other ones have three.
Well, let's see, how many, we have one.
It's two with three.
Three.
Did Pam bring a red bag?
It's what?
To break the tie?
So, there's a.
There's a tie.
There's three that have three votes.
Three that have three, well, then how many do we have that have four?
Wait, can you highlight Irene?
Two, two that have three votes.
Well, before we do that.
So. H and J.
One, two, three, four. So, we have two, two left, and there's three that have three. So, we have to pick two of the three items that have three votes each.
No, it's because the other three, E, three is already combined, so you only have H and J that are three.
So, that would be the seven.
So, we have to break the tie in H and J.
Can you hide it?
Well, let's see, you have one, two, three, four. We combine, one, two, three, four, five. So, it's still just four.
So, so H and J would be seven, right?
Yeah, so H and J would be the other two.
Yeah, so H and J would be the remaining.
And then, then you have just seven.
Okay, for the record, I'm just going to read as I did for goal one. Uh, two A is create new opportunities for workforce development in Richmond. Two B is revision, uh, Richmond Port as ecological, ecologically responsible revenue generator. Uh, D is, um, N E, where revitalize existing small businesses. H is, oh, F, excuse me. F is to create and or re-envision infrastructure to attract new business in retail and manufacturing, infield developments, and new customers for existing Richmond businesses. I is, or H is research new progressive taxes. I is strengthen grant infrastructure, build capacity to apply for and administer grants. And J is advance the East Bay Public Bank.
Okay, now, so when we reorder these, just so we're clear and we're clear for the record. We're saying that the seven are, repeat again, the seven are. Seven is A.
Two A, two B, two D, two F, two H, two I, and two J.
Is that what you did? Is that what you intend? Is that what you understand? Are we good?
Yeah.
Are we good? Hearing none. That's your vote.
Yeah.
And that will be what you'll be getting back when we consolidate all of this. Okay, so now we're going to goal.
Three.
Three.
And they got, you guys got seven votes?
Uh, three, how many votes do you get from three? I need to get them straight.
Seven.
You get seven votes and three? Okay. And let's see what got the most votes. Let's call out the ones that got the most votes first.
Okay. Uh, she, she's hiding the.
Oh, she's still tabulating, okay.
Yeah.
And we're on three. This is a kind of damn right.
Oh, I see.
Can I ask a question, a clarifying question, if it's okay while you're doing, um, the tally for three? For goal area two, once you combined D and E, that dropped your goals from ten to nine, per your rules, that made me you only should have had three votes versus seven. I just want to clarify if you all are fine with the fact that you have seven instead of three.
Weird.
So, do you want to look at how the votes spell and decide if you still want to do the combining? Or do you want to keep your seven votes and then see where you end up?
Mr. Mayor, since we, since we voted seven, I think we could keep it as seven, since that's how the rules were when we voted.
The comment has been made since you voted for seven, that you still should have seven votes, even though you combined one of them. Is there consensus around that?
Yeah.
Is consensus, there's consensus, let's go. Okay. Find the seven.
Okay, for goal three, uh, three A had six votes. Three B had six votes. Three D had three votes. Three N had five votes. Three S had one vote. Three U had two votes. Three V had one vote. Three X had one vote. Three double A had five votes. Three AB had three votes. And three AC had five votes.
And so.
And the, everyone voted for seven, correct?
Yes.
So.
Still keeping the seven.
Three A and three B had the most.
Okay, that's two.
Yeah. Three N had five votes. And three double A had five votes as well. Three AC had five votes. So, that puts us at five. And then, three D had three votes, which is the next, and then, three AB.
Three F.
So, those are the seven.
But let's see, those are the, the seven of the tally.
Okay, for the record, three A is improve maintenance of the built environment and parks. Three B is to create, um, new recreation, uh, infrastructure. Three D is to increase transportation for underserved communities, including bike and pedestrian route trails. Three N is to create a plan for wastewater treatment and sewer infrastructure improvement. Three double A is to improve recreation services by increasing access and improving communications and outreach. Three AB isn't, um. Oh.
The cyclovia.
Three AB, it looks like it's the same. Improve recreation services by increasing access and improving communication and outreach. It was one of two. So, it's the AA and AB have, it was just a really big column, I think, or section.
Yes, I think U should be the seventh goal.
And which should be the seventh goal?
U should be the seventh goal.
Yeah, so AA and AB are the same?
You had, okay.
Um, AC is to address mental health and a holistic approach. And then, U is to revisit CyberTran project.
Could you make sure that, um, you would like an all saying AA and AB are in the same, so, thank you.
Didn't we combine those?
Yes.
But we said we'd still get seven, still get seven. We get two seven, because that's what we started with. So, so the, so what falls off, looks, is.
Three S, three V, and three X.
Okay. Are you, is there consensus? And incidentally, I've said this before and I want to keep repeating it. For all of the good work that's gone on through this process, the fact that something doesn't end up on the list, we're going to put it in the, on the back burner. We're not going to put it in the freezer. So, as we go along, you and the staff and others will say, well, but you know, that didn't rise to the top. But there's a urgency now because something else is happening. But it's not going to drop off the list. It's just not going to be the primary focus as we leave the game. Are we good with this? Okay. Thank you, uh, clerks, for your excellence. Now, we're going to go.
Four.
Four. Okay, and the votes are.
So, four A got six votes.
And let's read, are you going to read, uh?
I think she, she was voting, uh, she was reading the ones that, at the end, yeah.
Okay, good, okay.
Four B got four votes. Four C got five votes. Four D got one vote. Four E got three votes. Four F got six votes. Four K got four votes. Four M got one vote. Four N got four votes. Four O got one vote. Four Q got four votes. And four R got two votes.
And for your voting.
So, for the, the ones that were voted the highest were four A, four F, four C, four B, four K.
Was it four K?
Yeah.
No, we went to four, okay. Four K.
Oh.
Four K, four N, and four Q.
Thank you. Four K, four N, and four Q. Is that seven?
Yeah.
Okay, now, you want to read, uh, the shot a little bit later?
Yes. Four A, improve road traffic, bike and pedestrian safety. Four B, continue to support alternatives to police and collaborate with C, uh, Contra Costa County regarding alternative methods. Four C, reduce illegal dumping. Four F, improve emergency response and preparation. Four K. Four K, establish more public shelters. Four N, reduce pollution and flaring from Chevron. And four Q, strategic parking and transportation plan that aligns with the plan development.
Who's your seven? We're all good? Okay. And the next one is goal?
Five.
Five. Okay. And how many votes did you get for five?
Three, I believe.
Oh, three.
So five A got six votes. Five B got two. Five C got two. Five D got three. And five E got five. So the top three are five A, five E, and five D.
Okay, five A is ensure that there is right staffing level and experience to meet service goals of each city department. Five D is improve fiscal responsibility. Five E is improve and modernize city IT.
Are we good? Okay. The next goal is?
Goal six.
Goal six. All right.
So, six A, oh, can you, sorry. Six A got five votes. Six B got two. Six C got three. Six D got two. Six E got four. Six F got one. And six G got one.
And of these, you get three.
I'm sorry, I think we, we did some, uh, we combined six, C and six D, and we were voting for six C. So.
So D and C were combined?
Yes.
So.
Well, let's see, if we do that, what happens?
That would be five. Five votes.
Further combined. Is that right?
Yes, five combined.
Five with the combined, so we have two with five and one with four. Is that right?
Uh huh.
Is that right?
Yes.
And, um, D combined, but Henry, I thought you said something off.
Oh, that may have been spoken. By combining them, C and D, that gave us five votes.
So you can update, I guess.
So there's, so there's two five votes and one four, and that's all we get.
Yes, so for clarity's sake, uh, you might want to put, uh, six C dash D.
It was five votes.
They put it under.
So then.
Okay.
Well, as we say, I appreciate your comment, too. Let's make sure we, when we do the counting, when we bring it all together, that we get it straight. Okay, are we clear, though?
And then E.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so that's it.
I will read six. So six A is moving point Melody Four with Park District. Six C, which is combined with six D, includes prepare for sea level rise and consider shoreline resiliency inventory plan. And six E is to examine the impact of distribution centers on public health, and then use information to adjust zoning to protect sensitive receptors from increased exposure by using green zones or other tools to create a reduced point sources, uh, pollution area around sensitive sites.
Okay. All right, can we bring back up our timeline? So you can decide what's next, how much time, when we reconvene, uh, to finish this. Should bring it up in just a minute. Uh, what we, it was too ambitious, but, you know. We had to, we had to be ambitious, so we'd have to keep coming back. What we clearly are not going to get through is to establish the timeframes for each of the objectives. And that was to be, as you laid it out before, one-year goals, two-year goals. And there was a comment made about wanting to try to put as much of it into two-year goals that is realistic and manageable, because after two years, the composition of the council may have changed. There are some of these that clearly will require more than two years. And what we said is, if it requires more than two years, that doesn't mean that we start in year three. It means we start in year one. So that in five years, we will accomplish it. And I keep coming back to yours about the train and the infrastructure and that, that's much more than one or two years. But in order to make it by five years, we have to start next month. So that was going to be the next part of this, to go through the ones that you just ranked. And you decide which of those go in the one-year bucket, which of those go in the two-year bucket, what goes in the three-plus-year bucket. Now, it is six forty. Do you want to start that? Do you want to hear from the public and have your final comments and wrap up and set your next meeting? Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Jimenez.
So, um, in terms of assigning the amount of time that each of these things take, I really do feel like that's something that we need to hear from staff. Because they need to weigh all these things together and, you know, how they can be scheduled. I do think that for the ask should be, um, from staff to, you know, categorize things that they can do in one year, things they can do two-year, and if it's more than two years, maybe say more than two years, but then if they can make an effort to figure out what we can do to start towards those things in year one and year two. Um, so that we're not saying this takes more than five years, therefore we won't ever start it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that if, if we could leave that to staff, because they know best what their whole thing is, that that would work. And then I'd like to hear public comment.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Jimenez, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to hear public comments, and I will add to what Councilmember Robinson says also that, there are some things that are really key for the community. For instance, like street calving has been something that the community is just really emailing us. So I think it's a combination of like, what is staff is, you know, that is coming, but also what are the, the, the things that the community are asking us that are really pressing issues that we can see some improvements in the short term, one or two years. And also because, like, particularly in street calving, um, we have been moving money to that, and we understand that one of the things that had happened is that public work is in, kinda like reconstruction with new staff. Um, we understand that, so just be mindful of that, but at the same time, be mindful that our community is kinda like, you know, dating that with emails. And I, from District Six, as the chief of police said last time in public comments, this is one of the hub areas where more collisions are happening. So, thank you.
Yes, I know that staff heard and respects very much that comment, and I think they're all goals and energy aligned with that. Absolutely. They get calls, too. Lots of them.
I just wanted to say that the timeline we have already asked staff to do by completing the categories on the sheet, so it would be redundant and, and a bit forced to ask for that here, now. So, so, um, we've put a lot of work on staff with this, with this, and staff has already done a lot of work. And I think we need to allow them more time to, to do it properly so that we can move forward informed.
I sure do appreciate that very, very much.
So, I would, I would like to hear public comment also.
Yes. Any other council members regarding timeframes and suggestions that's been made? That we have staff take the next brackets, go through the priorities and provide your input. And I would strongly recommend that it doesn't rest there. They have to bring it back to you, and you need to bless it.
Can I make, can I make, I'm sorry, can I make the clarification, though, that we're asking them to categorize them in terms of one-year goals, two-year goals, and if it's more than two years, to clearly identify what can be accomplished within one year and two years? Not just say, this is more than ten years, and then leave it at that?
Well, absolutely, and I thought I made that real clear. For your long-term goals, if you don't start on it in year one, you're never gonna get there. Just be realistic, that for yours, one year, there's no way you're gonna do those tracks. But if you don't start at some point, start the conversation, what's it gonna take? Ten years from now, it's not exactly what it's gonna take. Councilmember.
If I can just, uh, clarify, or put a note out there and clarify hopefully. So, and we can maybe add another column. So under column C, this is timeline fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four as an example. That was, we can use that in any way, but now as I'm hearing my colleagues, maybe we do need another column. So maybe that one tells us when they start. So Project A is gonna start fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, because that's when we have the staffing, that's when we have the budget, et cetera. And then I'm also hearing that we wanna know, okay, Project A is gonna start in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, it's gonna take two years, so that's another column. So that we kind of know, and then we have the expected completion date, which is column J. That one's, one is gonna end, but we also need one that kinda tells us when it's gonna start. So just one more column. Thank you for adding it there.
Does staff have any comments?
Yes. Lilia has a very important question, so I'd like her to add it. Is staff providing, like, the timeline and stuff for whatever you voted on, your top picks? So not for the whole document, just for whatever you voted on? Just clarifying.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's a comment about the back burner, but not the freezer.
Yeah, well, two, you were mentioning earlier, Henry, about some of these projects that didn't make the top of the list. They, we still wanna put them somewhere, so it might be worth, like, prioritizing what we've already prioritized. But being able to figure out the other pieces, so we know where they may fall. Because as you were saying, it might be that budget comes in all of a sudden from someone that says, hey, you're working on Project X, and there's money now, so do we wanna move it up, and this is what's gonna take?
They don't leave any money on the table, so this is good money. Councilmember Bana, Vice Mayor.
Let's have mercy on the staff. Let them just fill out those tables and the top priorities. We know what the rest are. If the money is there, then we look into them. By this budget season, let's get things going.
That, yeah, that won't be.
We don't have to be perfect all the time.
That won't be, well, we work towards it, but thank you for recognizing that we can always get there with the perfection. The emphasis, throw me out of here. I'm trying to stand up anyway. The emphasis is gonna be on what you just voted on. That's where the focus is gonna be, immediately. And as we go through the course of the year, and you get the budget put to bed, and you want to talk about capital improvements and all those high priorities, we'll continue to look at those things that didn't make the top of the list. We heard it, we're important, we're important to staff. A lot of those things didn't make the top of the list. Staff is equally invested in making something happen. So just wanna set realistic expectations that the first emphasis is gonna be on what you just decided. And the rest of that list is not gonna be put in the freezer. We'll continue to bring it up, you will continue to bring it up, and the staff will respond, you know, best they can. Vice Mayor Bluff, and then Councilmember Jimenez.
So, um, I would like to ask staff, even before you fill in all the columns, to send us a list. I mean, I tried to, I listened to everything and checked off the highest three and seven priorities, but if you could at least send us what we all voted on, so we have it in, on paper or on email. And, um, the other question, ours, comment I wanted to make. I realized that we didn't get into real nitty-gritty details, and we didn't want to. But there are some things, like examples, the port is a big issue. And I know a lot of people in Marina Bay and my district are saying, please make sure there's, there's, you know, we don't get impacted further with noise and emissions. And I think that's understood. So I think it states it pretty well in the ecologically based port audit. So I just wanted to mention that.
Uh, any questions or comments over here? Mr. Mayor, you ready for public comments? All right, Mayor says he's ready, the rest of you ready?
So, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. We have six speakers. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes to address the council. Speakers are Wesley Alexander, Amanda Eicher, Tarnell Abbott, Aiden Hogan, Danielle Jones, and Daniel Chavaria. Please come forward. Wesley Alexander.
Good evening, council, mayor and council members. My name is Wesley Alexander, CEO for CoBiz Richmond. As we kind of go over the priorities for improving revenue and improving economic development, I really wanted to encourage the council to prioritize creating a process for CBOs and businesses here in Richmond to apply for ARPA funding. As we know, those ones will receive the help with economic revitalization, help, uh, businesses that lost revenue, as well as address other public concerns, which also include infrastructure. And at this time, I can say as an entrepreneur, that many of the stakeholders that serve the businesses and nonprofits, they are suffering. They are experiencing challenges with their business, and it's having a waterfall effect with those stakeholders. It's also having an impact on us, CoBiz, which is an entrepreneurial resource that has served more than four hundred members at this, at the space, but also more than three hundred and seventy, um, companies that have utilized our space as a resource in downtown Richmond, California. So I just use that as an example, because we're talking about putting in programs and procedures to impact businesses and the growth of this ecosystem. But we need to be able to provide a process by which people can apply and be able to sustain their enterprises so they can continue contributing to the economic vitality of this, of this ecosystem. Lastly, if you think about COVID, many businesses and enterprises survived the pandemic, and now they need to be able to, now the pandemic is over, they need a process and some funding to help them, to help them move forward, so that it can be no longer, let's say, closing or moving to other cities where they feel they're being more receptive and supportive. So just wanted to encourage the council to put a process in place immediately that organizations and nonprofits and businesses can apply for, so they can stay present and part of this ecosystem here. So, thank you.
Amanda?
Good evening, and thank you for taking my comments. My name's Amanda Eicher, I'm the executive director at NIAID Arts Center. And I'm here in a way to second what Wesley just said. And to support my colleague Andrea's comments to you via email. You all received a request that I made to the council to consider one-time funding of $200,000 to support facade renovation that we'll take on this year. We're in an unimproved district in Richmond. Um, we are committed to improving our facade and our section of Twenty-third Street for public safety, for beautification, and for the health, well-being, and safety of our neighbors. And, uh, you all have details via email of our request and why we feel it's important. We're one of many nonprofits and businesses who have substantial capital improvement requests that are justified and important for our maintenance enrichment. I would encourage, especially considering goal four A, an open RFP process, so that nonprofits who may not be as empowered as I am can come forward with their proposals as well, and that we can be considered in an open equitable process. I appreciate so much your consideration of our proposal, and I look forward to, what I hope will be a real benefit of ARPA funding to capital improvements that small businesses and nonprofits hope to make for the betterment of our city. Thank you.
Tarnell Abbott?
Good evening, Tarnell Abbott. I sent you all an email, I don't know if I'll be able to finish this. As you consider your goal setting of shoreline issues, please keep in mind that you have an obligation to protect not only our current residents, but future generations. Richmond's long history of industrial development has left a legacy of toxic contamination on our shoreline. These sites should be mapped and the toxins listed. One of the most contaminated sites in the state of California is the Zeneca site on our south shoreline, where hundreds of chemicals of concern are buried and mixed in an unwind illegal toxic waste dump. This complex toxic soup includes all the most health damaging substances you have ever heard of and more. The resulting toxic plumes have continued to flow offsite and onto neighboring properties and into St. George and San Francisco Bay. The land is so contaminated that deep restrictions prohibit childcare, elder care, hospitals, or educational facilities, and yet the plan is to build thousands of residential units on it. Remediation activities thus far include a small portion of removal, leaving 500,000 cubic yards of toxic waste and onsite experimental treatment of volatile organic chemicals or VOCs. Sea level rise will bring groundwater upward and inland, pushing VOCs into super lines and homes. Rather than put vulnerable residents, nearby neighbors, visitors, and workers at risk of illness and/or death from toxic exposure, I urge you to adhere to the precautionary principle, a guideline in environmental decision-making which has four central components. Taking preventive action in the face of uncertainty, shifting the burden of proof, I'm almost done, to the proponents of an activity, exploring a wide range of alternatives to possible harmful actions. Also, please see the health and all policies. Thank you.
Aiden Hogan.
Good evening. My wife and I, about a year ago, applied to have some traffic calming measures. But in, we live in northeast neighborhood in Richmond on Esmond Street between 34th and 35th. Seen a number of accidents in the four years that we've lived there. And I'm coming here today as a representative for a number of the neighbors that live in our area. I have a couple of letters with me, but I'm not going to read them given the time constraints. I would rather just sort of summarize the sense of fear and nervousness that our community and neighbors are feeling around some of the high-speed crashes that are happening in our area, specifically on Esmond. The stop sign on 32nd is the last stop sign until San Pablo. So that's seven blocks on a very wide street where we have no traffic mitigation. The speed bumps have helped, but people hit the bumps and then accelerate after them all the way out to San Pablo Avenue. And most recently last week, we had another high-speed accident. That was so fast that it flipped a truck, causing the truck to go into a neighbor's yard and destroyed a significant portion of their fence. It's a residential area. I have a five-year-old daughter. There's many young kids that live in our area and we're very concerned about our safety. People are driving very recklessly and we would like to see additional funding and solutions to mitigate this process. I spoke with a neighbor recently whose fence was damaged. His name is Son. He can't be here today because of his own responsibilities, but I think he, okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Danielle Jones.
Good evening. Such an honor to be pulled out of retirement to see all of you, my colleagues I worked with for so many years on the bench. Thank you, Aiden. I'm coming here piggybacking with Aiden. He called me on my job today. I live at 34th on the corner of 34th and Esmond and I have a 10-year-old. He's absolutely right. Before he moved there, he's only been there a year, but I've been there 13 years and I've seen four major high-speed accidents where cars are flipping in residential areas. This is uncalled for and I know we don't have a traffic mitigation on our police force. And there's some other dynamics that's going on that we probably need to address some of the laws in our city. I was a victim in Calistoga of being totaled out by my car by someone who did not have a driver's license, whose car was insured in their name, whose car was registered in their name, but they did not have a driver's license. And this is going on throughout the entire state of California, where we're getting offshore cars insured by people who do not have driver's license, but they have cars to work in our state with no driver's license. So therefore, no laws, no knowledge of laws of the road. It's dangerous. I have a 10-year-old son that plays basketball in the driveway and the ball sometimes goes in the streets. He comes in the house and says, Dad, my ball is in the street. Well, when I play ball, we, at 10 years old, we can, we knew how to look both ways and go get the ball. But I, with all the trepidation that my community has, he has a five-year-old that walks in my neighborhood, plays with the money in my yard and talks to me all the time. And so it's, it's a serious problem on Esmond. We really need some help with the traffic, not only on Esmond, but in that entire northeast area of Richmond. It's ridiculous.
Our last speaker is Daniel Chavaria.
Good evening, Mayor Martinez, city council members. First of all, I want to thank you and congratulate you for the work you're doing today. This is very important for all the staff. One of my favorite phrases are, if you want to help others, tell them the truth. If you want to help yourself, tell them what they want to hear. Well, the truth is that this is a set of goals that luckily from 100 plus, it's reduced to maybe around 20 plus now, which is great. But these are not projects. A project needs a scope, location, duration, and budget. These are goals, basically. We already have worked on a list of projects that are not funded and just to mention one, that is very recent, it's on a meter of wool, right? I mean, if we don't do anything before the next winter, we might lose that, that row win. That doesn't have any money right now behind it. At some point in the next few city council meetings, we'll come back to you with a list of projects and you will decide which ones will be funded with the available funds or not. And definitely what as a staff we can, we can offer is to assign, I mean, you have set the goals. We can take, this specific project corresponds to Goals Three A, Four B. I'm just making this up, but you get the idea. And then that may help you make the decision easier. If we started spending a lot of time in these goals to give them duration and all that, like if they were projects, we're going to be distracted for the projects that we already have. And believe me, we are eager to solve problems like the community is bringing right now, the traffic calming issues, that we cannot get into that until we don't stop making reports that we need right now. But at some point, we need to stop planning and start doing. And we need your help allowing us to represent that to you. And with all this effort that you already put, it will be very easy to make decisions or easier. Thank you.
And there are no other public speakers.
Okay, so the mayor has had to leave, so I, as Vice Mayor, am filling in here as we round out this meeting and head into the last item, which is next steps and final comments. So I'll turn it over to our facilitator, Henry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. What do you envision as your next steps in addition to the motion that was made and was passed? Is there anything else you want to add to that? Councilmember Bana and then Councilmember Robinson.
One immediate suggestion based on what Director Chavaria said, maybe the next step in terms of short-term goals, if the staff can add their stamp on the projects that need to be done more urgent, helps us better make decisions. In long-term, I think we should continue these meetings. I find this very useful to discuss the next step in terms of, for example, addressing homelessness in a more open forum and also talking about the strategy and priorities for our next maybe four or five years. That'd be helpful. So I think we need at least one more session with you.
Councilmember Robinson.
So I'm really happy we got to this point. I think it was really good and important work. What I don't want us to do right now is to devalue all the work we just did. Operating by a plan is really important. A plan that we're all in agreement on is really important. I agree that what we have here are goals and objectives and that we do need to put specific projects to them and we don't need to disregard what we just did. I think that is just incredibly important. So I feel like the next steps include kind of matching back these set of goals and priorities to real, real life projects and calling out if there are projects in the queue that actually don't fall in alignment with our priorities and then we need to make some decisions around them, whether or not there's something we have to do or whether or not we should put those on, on the shelf. So that's my thought and I do feel like we do need staff's help to do that because they know what the projects are, they know what timeframes are and all these things. Thanks.
Yeah, I think like also, yes, these are goals, but also we have some objectives here that we're trying to go into the specific projects. They are like, for instance, and I am just reading Goal Four, the one for A, the goal is improve road traffic by competition safety and objectives are really clear, implement the 18 projects approved by city council for a street calming. Then there is implement projects in local, in the local road safety plan in Barrett, Esmond, McBride, McDonald, Carson, Delaware. So I think, yeah, these are not specific projects, but I think like taking that and then putting the specific project is going to be helpful, but I agree with Councilmember Robinson. We just need a prioritization. Council is making a direction with this goal for what council thinks are the things that staff should be focused on. And this prioritization session was asked by staff because staff was feeling that we were bringing a lot of items that all, they thought that everything was urgent. So with these, what we are saying is, these are the things that we want to do prioritizations. So I hope that what we bring items in the city council are in alignment with these goals that we just prioritized. And I, and also asking also staff that the items that they bring are in alignment with these goals that city council prioritized. So maybe in the agenda, we will need to add a colon or a line saying like, how this item is, is moving a specific goal that we prioritize here. But I, I agree with Councilmember Robinson that we, this was a session to prioritize, to give direction to staff so they don't feel like everything is urgent. It's a priority.
Okay. So go ahead. No, I'll wait. Okay, well, go ahead, because I just want to make a final comment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say that what Public Works Director said, I don't take a disregard for what we just said. What we just said is very important. I find it very useful. That's why I'm asking to let's continue it strategically. I think it's very important. But in engineering, when we're defining a solution, we always look at the constraints. And if you want to bypass the constraint, if you want to provide options, there's a cost associated with that. We need to be realistic in terms of the constraints. And if you want to redefine the constraints, there's a cost into dropping one project, losing so much ground or whatever it is. We need to learn about that. So rather than taking it personal and considering a disregard, I invite all of us to work together. I take it as a word of caution about maybe not everything can be implemented. We have to be a little more picky and choosy and let's just work together. And it's been so good so far. We all feel good about it and I think to be realistic, we need to come up with a feasible solution to the problem. Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, so I just wanted to also agree with what's been said about the great work that we did over these last few meetings here. And I look forward to staff bringing us the list with all the columns filled in so we have a better understanding. I also wanted to say in terms of a next step, I personally think we should just take a break from these meetings at this point to let staff do what it needs to do and hear back from you through a council meeting or consent calendar item or whatever. But I also would like to keep on the, at least in our, you know, in our minds, the idea of looking at rules and procedures. Yeah, and I know Mr. Gardner was kind enough to say that could be another session. Perhaps that could be after a break from, after we get back, having finished this goal priority sessions. At some point, we may or may not decide that we want rules and procedures. I personally would like to discuss them because I sometimes feel the council meetings, as much as I think, you know, people are trying to cooperate and such, I sometimes think there's a little bit of different perspectives on how the rules and procedures should be laid out. So I would just like us to keep that in our mind. And if Mr. Gardner is kind enough to consider holding a session at some point in the future on that?
Your point has never been lost on me. When I first talked to you, you raised that. And having done these a few times and having interviewed all of you, I knew that this was going to be a very lengthy and exhausting process. And I suggested, and I've spoken to the mayor about that, that I think, and I don't have to do it, but I think it's a helpful suggestion, having observed your council meetings. And it's more than the rules and procedures. And I did suggest that you enlarge that because one of the things, and I will make this comment now, I really think it would be healthy for that session to be larger than that. So you talk about what the mayor and the council need from the staff to be successful. And to turn that question around, what does the staff need from the mayor and the council to be successful? And then how do you establish an environment of mutual trust? I told you when we started this, I passed out to you and you have been very mindful of it, that there are vacancies all over the place. And the staff, trying to put the budget together, dealing with the state, all that and all that stuff, is just feeling overwhelmed. But I have heard all of you recognize that and you have said, you know, you know staff can't do everything tomorrow. I have heard it and I think the staff has heard it as well. You have spent a lot of time with this process. If you don't follow it, I am exhausted. Too much work went into this. Far too much work went into this on everybody's part. And I hope that when we leave here, we will recognize that it is by doing this, recognizing what's already on the plate, recognizing the constraints, recognizing we have key vacancies. When you mentioned finance, I keep showing you that chart. There's a 27% vacancy in that department. So staff can't do everything at once. And I think that's part of what you're hearing and feeling, but Shasa and the management leadership team really are working very, very hard to be responsive to the mayor and to the council. And I hear you understanding and respecting that. So I want us all to hear what everybody's saying. The urgency that the council is expressing and the time and energy and thought that you put into this process and also recognizing that we can't do it all in the morning. And I haven't heard anybody say the expectation is that we do it all in the morning.
Henry?
After Councilmember Zeta?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just want to thank the council for going through this process and trusting in Henry and all of us to work collaboratively together. So I feel like that this is a really good start and so just want to say thank you for your, for your time and thank you to all the staff and to Henry for the work they've done and all the participants throughout the city and in the community. One thing that I wanted to offer that we could do.
One thing that I wanted to offer that we could do as a starting point is we, and we've done this in the past with Health and All Policies and the Climate Action Plan, is in our staff report, we can start including a section for synergistic and we could call it, you know, and use the appropriate nomenclature from this document. And so then that way in the agenda reports, you can see how they're, how it correlates to what you've put forward today. So that's one thing that we can start to do. And then I would also offer that per the charter, we do need to adopt the budget, hopefully on the 20th, but we do have to adopt it in June. But what we can do is work over the summer and in Q1 of, or no later than Q2, beginning of Q2, have a refined fiscal year 23, 24 budget. And that will enable us to align what you've put forward today with where we understand there are gaps for funding. And then also understanding that, you know, like yesterday, we got really good news on one grant application and so it may impact how the city council wants to prioritize when we do get funding that comes in because it may mean that'll be less of an impact on the general fund. And so then it may allow us to focus key resources in other areas. And so I feel like this was a really good process and if we continue to have the success with grant writing, that I think that's going to continue to make it possible for us to do a lot more.
All right. Thank you, City Manager, for saying that. Are there any more final comments from anyone?
Thank you all very much.
Yes, let's thank Mr. Gardner. Yes, so with that, thank you to everybody involved here and this meeting is adjourned.